Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the February 19th, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh gracious having the Father, we come thanking you for another day. We thank you for all of our employees who showed up to work today. We thank you for our first responders that whatever might happen today, they would be able to take care of our citizens. We thank you for the Strawberry Queen Court who is here today to be recognized. Father, thank you for all that you do on our behalf. I ask that you bless this administration. Bless all the staff who took a part in this agenda for today. Bless the board that we will make the decisions that will be pleasing in your sight in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. This morning, we have two very special presentations. Both will be made by Commissioner Miller.
It is an honor to introduce the following guests for a very special presentation for an event that is dear to me and my community. Please join me at the podium when I call your name. Mr. Kyle Robinson. Danny Kotan, the festival's chairman of the board. Oh, I forgot to say Kyle is the president. So welcome. The Honorable Nathan Kilton, Mayor of Plant City. The Honorable Jason Jones, Commissioner and Vice Mayor of Plant City. Ms. Donna Keel and Lori Yarborough, the festival queen coordinators and mentors, or as we affectionately call them, the Strawberry Moms. Good morning and thank you all for coming. I believe, Danny, you have somebody very important you'd like to invite up?
I would.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And I thank you to the county commission and for taking the time to recognize the strawberry festival and the queen in court. It's a special time for us and we open up next Thursday and hope to see you all there. So it's my honor at this time to introduce our 2025 Florida Strawberry Festival Queen, Ms. Gabriella Hagman. She'll introduce her court.
My name's Gabriella Hagman and I'm the 2025 Florida Strawberry Festival Queen. Our first maid is Macy Riley. Court member McKinley Jensen. Court member Olivia Lawton. And court member Abigail Mullis. I just wanted to extend our gratitude for you guys having us here today. We're also excited. We're just small-town girls, so having the opportunity to be here in such a prestigious place is such an honor and we hope to see you all at the Florida Strawberry Festival this year. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So wonderful to see you ladies. You stay up here with me. Yes, yes. Good morning. Now, let's see here. I have, forgive me for, we have more distinguished guests and that is Mr. and Mrs. Berry. Are they going to come up and join us? Welcome. So I guess there's no need to tell you what my favorite color is, right? Strawberries are gold in Plant City. The delicacy, a true economic engine, is put on a richly deserved pedestal at the Florida Strawberry Festival. Each spring, the Florida Strawberry Festival rolls out the red carpet to welcome visitors from throughout Florida and the world. This is the top festival in Florida and the best in North America and the world. Everyone enjoys agricultural exhibits, fine arts, horticulture, crafts, rides, food, great entertainment, and so much more. And speaking of great entertainment, nobody brings in top entertainers like the Florida Strawberry Festival. For example, country legend Reba McEntire, who will be performing this year, has set opening day ticket sales record, which is fantastic. The festival grows every year in terms of attractions, popularity, and attendance, further strengthening this heritage. Central to its focus, the festival continues to preserve and enhance agriculture and historical legacy of the Florida Strawberry Festival. I am proud to present the following proclamation honoring this festival. Do you guys hold this up here? It reads, whereas Plant City is the winter strawberry capital of the world with about 13,000 acres grown annually by its members of the Florida Strawberry Growers Association, and whereas since 1930, the Florida Strawberry Festival has united the community by bringing together people to honor farmers and celebrate the bountiful strawberry harvest, a $1.1 billion industry in Hillsborough County alone. Whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival draws, entertains, and enlightens over 600,000 local residents and visitors from around the world each year, introducing them to plant cities, agriculture arts, businesses, horticulture, and industry. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival has long been recognized as the number-one fair or festival in Florida, as well as one of the top 35 events in North America, a true destination where people enjoy some of the world's top entertainment, educational exhibits, friendly competitions, and attractions. And whereas, the 2025 Florida Strawberry Festival Queen, Gabriella Hagman, first maid Macy Faith Riley, court members McKinley Jensen, Olivia Paige Lawton, and Abigail Lee Mullis will serve as the festival's goodwill ambassadors. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival Board of Directors, Festival Chairman, Danny Kotan, President Kyle Robinson, and many local volunteers and civic organizations devote countless hours to the success of the event. And whereas, the stage is set for an unforgettable 90th annual event with such dynamic performers as record-breaking country music singer Reba McEntire, The Beach Boys, Lynyrd Skynyrd, and other performers, as well as over 85 rides, 150 food vendors, six food contests, seven livestock shows, and hundreds of arts and crafts among other events. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare February 27th through March 9th, 2025 Florida Strawberry Festival Days in Hillsborough County, and encourages everyone to celebrate the festival's rich heritage and the strawberry harvest that greatly contributes to the community, region, and state, and hopes everybody has a great time at Berry Fest 25, awarded this 19th day of February 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Miller, and thank you Chair Hagan and the entire county commission for not only having us today but recognizing this remarkable group of young ladies behind me, this queen in court we had the opportunity to spend some time with since they were crowned in January. And not only did they represent the Florida Strawberry Festival for 11 days, but they represented us throughout the year at so many events and the city of Plant City and the entire county. So thank you for recognizing them today and thank you for recognizing the Florida Strawberry Festival. It is a vital part of our economy in Plant City and the county. We have a tremendous economic impact and we create jobs at the festival and the strawberry industry. So we are so pleased that you recognize how important and vital we are to our county's economy. And we share a great partnership with the county and a great partnership with the city of Plant City, and that's evident by Mayor Nate Kilton being here today and Vice Mayor Jason Jones. And they're great partners with us and I believe Mayor Nate Kilton will just say a few words.
Thank you, Kyle. It's always a great day in Plant City and the best time of year is the Florida Strawberry Festival without a doubt. Kyle mentioned, you know, the importance to the local economy from the Florida Strawberry Festival, the $1 billion in economic impact from the strawberry industry. But, you know, the festival is so much more than just a festival, than 10 days of rides and attractions and fun stuff. It's about galvanizing our community, right? We have over 2,000 volunteers that come out to support the Florida Strawberry Festival. And when our directors travel the country and talk to other places, nobody can figure out how we do it. There's no other areas that have that type of community support and it's because of the people in Plant City that just love our community. And it's also about building leadership. You know, you see these young ladies behind me and you take any time with them at all, you'll see how poised they are, how hardworking they are, how dedicated they are. These are the future leaders of our communities. You know, our former Strawberry Festival Queen, Ashley Moody, is now a U.S. Senator. It's also about youth in agriculture and what that means to building leaders and to building strong families. You know, there's $1.9 million last year was put in the pockets of children that did livestock shows. That type of dedication is so important and I think frankly more important than economic impact. And the Florida Strawberry Festival stands tall all year round. It's not just on these types of events, but for the hurricanes. You know, every major hurricane we've had recently, they've offered their grounds for staging for linemen that come in to get electricity back online. And during Hurricane Milton, they were very generous in allowing an opportunity for our state CFO, Jimmy Patronas, to bring his team in with an insurance center so that people could come in and sit down with their insurers right there and get checks on the spot. Also FEMA came in for seven days and we were able to service 100 to 150 people a day, a lot of them Spanish-speaking and lower income that really needed help. So, you know, you can tell that we're beaming it with pride for our Florida Strawberry Festival in Plant City and just wanted to share some of the other things that they do that that story doesn't get told well enough. So Kyle, to you and everybody at the festival, can't thank you enough for all that you do for Plant City and for Hillsborough County. And also want to thank the county as well for their partnership because they sent resources over to help us in that endeavor as well. So we really appreciate that partnership. Vice Mayor?
Thank you all for having us here today. Good morning. They've told you everything about the Strawberry Festival. As you've heard, we have a lot to see and do. This morning, I got to tell my kids I was coming over here and they said, Dad, does that mean the Strawberry Festival is about to start? And I said, yes. So my kids, my three kids were very excited because this is a great day because it means we are very close to the Strawberry Festival. But to wrap up, you've heard there's a lot to see and do, but let's talk about the strawberries. If you have not tried the strawberries this year, they are absolutely delicious. So another good reason to come to the Strawberry Festival is you have to come try the strawberries. As Vice Mayor for Plant City, I'd like to say I'm an expert on strawberries. I could eat them for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and sometimes I do. I have been trying them nonstop lately. They are extremely sweet this year and absolutely delicious. So another great reason to come to our wonderful event in Plant City. We look forward to seeing you all there and have a great day.
Thank you, everyone. I would be remiss if I was following a script and didn't invite Mr. Tim up here. You better come on up. You come on up. I'm not going to take no for an answer. My daughter served on this court in 2020 and he is invaluable. He spends the entire year with them. So everybody loves Mr. Tim. I would like to give a huge round of applause for everyone being here. Thank you for supporting the Florida Strawberry Festival. It means so much to our community and we're so grateful that you all are here. We're going to take a quick picture.
I'm just protecting this from you. You're going to move that?
The photographer is going to put some instructions.
Put them on that.
Yeah.
Y'all back up.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
For my next recognition, I would like to ask Brad Gregory, CEO of A Kid's Place, to Good morning and welcome. I'm honored to present this commendation which recognizes the hard work of an organization that is dedicated to helping protecting and nurturing foster children in Hillsborough County. For the past 15 years, A Kid's Place has done a tremendous job providing services that meet the social, educational, medical, and psychological needs of our foster children. The organization has been steadfast in its mission by keeping sibling groups together in a safe, stable, home-like environment until permanent placement can be provided. I am proud to present this commendation to Mr. Gregory as the Board of County Commissioners celebrates the dedication and achievements of A Kid's Place. I will read the commendation. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate A Kid's Place on its 15th anniversary of helping and protecting foster children in the community on this incredible milestone. Since its founding in 2009, A Kid's Place has shown an unwavering dedication to its mission of providing safe, loving, and nurturing home for foster children who have been removed from their homes due to abuse, abandonment, or neglect. The nonprofit has been steadfast in preserving the late co-founder Dottie Berger McKinnon's vision of a program that raises the standards of residential care for foster children. In addition to providing a variety of services which meet the social, education, medical, and psychological needs of a child, the organization provided over 290,000 nights where a child is tucked into a warm bed with clean pajamas and a full stomach. In 2022 and 2024, A Kid's Place expanded its services with a sixth and seventh home to include residential support for youth aging out of care that serves ages 18 to 22. Because of this organizational's live-in-house parent model, brothers and sisters can heal together in a safe and loving home-like environment with onsite therapy and educational resources. A Kid's Place has served over 1,700 children and 753 families and kept 522 sibling groups together, a testament of the organizational's commitment to serve. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend A Kid's Place for its 15 years of compassionate dedication to foster children and wishes it many more years of success, awarded this 19th day of February 2025. Mr. Gregory, congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
If I could have our development director, Sam Mellon, come up as well. She is vital to our operation. But since 2009, thank you, Commissioner Miller and all the other county commissioners. Since 2009, we have worked tirelessly to raise the standard of residential care serving these kids that are trying to heal from their trauma. And so with the county's help and support, we've been able to do that. So we're very grateful and honored and really appreciate it. And if you have not been out to A Kid's Place, we invite you to come out. Commissioner Miller was just out there and I know several other commissioners have been out there and I think it's very important to see the operation that we do. Thank you.
We're going to take a few photos.
Watch this. Sorry. I know I'm so afraid.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. We have one off the agenda item by Commissioner Miller. It's item F5. This is to receive a status report and update from staff on activities proposed to investigate historic stormwater flooding that occurred during the 2024 hurricane season. We have several items for time certain. The first one is item D1 at 10 o'clock. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendments to the Plan Year 24 Annual Action Plan, to close the public comment period, and to adopt the substantial amendment to the Annual Action Plan for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing and adopt amendments to the Hillsborough County Construction Code as directed by the Florida Division of Emergency Management. Item D3 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizens' input and discuss whether to arbitrate two Tampa Bay water use permit applications. Item E1 at 10:15 is to receive a special appearance by Victor D. Christ, Hillsborough County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller. Item B2 at 10:30 is to select and approve and execute a 10-year agreement with the highest-ranked and best-qualified firm, Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company, for administration of the county's self-funded Group Health Plan. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion, approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, the Board of going to public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time you address the board that your comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. When you come forward, please state your name, speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. The first three speakers are David Coleman, followed by Brooke Ward, and then Todd Randolph.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dave Coleman and I'm here in support of the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan for Hillsborough County. Some time ago, this board agreed to write a letter to the Public Service Commission requesting their hearing on proposed rate hikes beheld in Hillsborough, and they did so. Only one commissioner showed up to the in-person hearing. Residents and groups showed up with resounding requests that TECO not be giving their demands. Subsequently, they have been given even more rate increases under the veil of hurricane repairs. AMIRA purchased a faulted Broken Company, one with a history of being fined by the state EPC going back decades for environmental violations. TECO has a history of going to the PSC for rate hikes to cover these fines and being given them. Clearly, the PSC is not on the side of the public. Neither is this board. Over the past almost two years, a letter requesting a local venue was the only time you have stood with 1.4 million residents of Hillsborough County. Time and again, we have brought simple requests here and at town halls and had the doors shut in our faces. To add insult to injury, I saw where you were inviting Archie Collins to be some kind of unelected consultant here. I believe TECO donates large amounts to your campaigns and sponsorships to garner favor. Is the Hillsborough EPC still monitoring a shifting toxic plume beneath the old, unlined coal ash piles? Yet, AMIRA presents itself as some savior to our environment, particularly manatee swimming nearby that toxic sludge. Is it or not a fact that the largest contributor to air pollution is energy production in Hillsborough, even more than traffic? With TECO having a 70% commitment to frack gas for the next 30 years and people like Jay Collins saying, "Gas today, gas tomorrow, and gas forever," how will change ever occur in the Sunshine State? The county has just granted, was just granted, $709 million in federal money, but it needs to have an actual disaster resilience plan. We have been offering just that. One piece might be, to solve the housing crisis in Hillsborough, might be found in the HUD grant if substandard homes can be made viable and affordable. Once again, the portico had its vigil for those perished in our streets unhoused. This was just last night. The new names are now written on the wall. Once again, not one elected came to pray. Rest assured, once again, your presence was felt as we were reminded of the $8 million removed from HOPE. Although it's old news, it will never go without saying how the B.O.C.C. took away HOPE from Hillsborough.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Brooke Ward, followed by Todd Randolph, and then David Sinclair. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Brooke Ward and I'm the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch, representing 6,301 Hillsborough County members. I am also a part of the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition, who joins me here. Today, I stand before you to emphasize the urgent need for Hillsborough County to pass an Affordable Energy and Climate Action Plan, and why now is the time to act. Our community faces unprecedented challenges from rising energy costs to the worsening effects of climate change. But these challenges also present an opportunity, a chance for Hillsborough County to innovate and to create a sustainable, affordable, and resilient future for all. First, let's talk about the need. Energy costs continue to rise, burdening our families, businesses, and our most vulnerable residents. The reality is that many households are struggling to keep the lights on and stay cool during the summer months. Meanwhile, extreme weather events are becoming more frequent, with floods, heat waves, and hurricanes threatening our homes and our economy. In March, Hillsborough residents will see $20 to $42 more per month on their bills as a result of last year's storms. And we can't afford to wait any longer to put a plan in place that addresses both affordability and climate resilience. Now here's why we must act right now. Hillsborough County has been awarded a $709 million federal grant specifically to support projects like this, projects that promote clean energy, energy efficiency, and climate adaptation. This funding is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Hillsborough County. If we don't act swiftly, this vital resource could be lost. Imagine what we could achieve with this support. Affordable energy solutions for all of our residents, energy-efficient buildings, renewable energy installations, and jobs that will strengthen our local economy for generations. And we are not alone in this struggle. Other counties in Florida have already taken action. Pinellas County to our west has enacted a Resilient Pinellas Action Plan. Pasco County to our north has launched the Resilient Pasco Project. And Orange Lee and Volusia Counties have all used community block grant disaster recovery funds to launch action plans investing in climate resiliency and economic stability. These counties have shown us that it is not only possible but beneficial to invest in sustainable energy solutions. Hillsborough County, the time to act is now. Let's follow the example set by our neighbors in Pinellas and Pasco and lead the way toward a more sustainable, affordable, and resilient Tampa Bay. You need an action plan for these funds? Here you go. Let's pass an Affordable Energy and Climate Action Plan and seize this opportunity to build a better tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Todd Randolph, followed by David Sinclair, and then Ashton Maddox. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph. I'm a local resident of Hillsborough County and a member of the Sierra Club Tampa Bay group, which is made up of more than 2,700 members in Hillsborough County. Our local group is one of 15 groups of the Florida Sierra Club chapter. I'm thankful for this opportunity to speak here today about one aspect of an Affordable Energy and Climate Plan, that being the provision of accountability metrics for energy providers. This entails that energy providers are held to accountability metrics so that lower income and more vulnerable customers are not paying disproportionately for a service while high-energy and corporate consumers pay proportionately less. This would be fulfilled by, one, addressing the class differences among customers and incentivizing industrial and commercial customers to switch to solar or other renewable energy solutions; and, two, addressing the increasing energy burden that county residents will face this year with the new TECO rate hikes that will increase electric bills an average of $40 a month. Energy burden is the percentage of a household's income that goes toward energy costs and is considered high when a household spends 6% or more of its income on energy. is considered high when a household spends 6% or more of its income on energy. Such measures as implementing a 6% cap so that the cost of the electric utility may not exceed 6% of a consumer's monthly income address this community calamity. High energy burdens are a problem because it can make it hard for households to pay for essentials like food and medicine. Low-income households and communities of color are disproportionately affected by high energy burdens. Addressing energy burden is an issue that Sierra Club advocates for on a national level. This coming year will be a time in which your constituents will face daunting energy burdens and will be desperately in need of solutions. An Affordable Energy and Climate Plan provides for such solutions in the way of accountability metrics for energy providers. Thank you, have an awesome day.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. David Sinclair, followed by Ashton Maddox, and then Adrian Raze. Good morning.
Good morning to all. I'm here in support of asking the Board of County Commissioners to support an Affordable Energy and Climate Plan for Hillsborough County. Now, imagine yourselves, there's going to come a time when you will wish to run again. And I would think that in the future, when you run again for your position, you want to keep the position, I'm sure. You can imagine the excitement that you could, at that time, be able to say to the people you want to follow you. I voted in 2025. I began working on a plan that would provide relief to the community from the scorching heat that we know is going to come. Relief. You could also say that you have provided safety by fixing the parks, the sidewalks, so that those who are pedestrians have coverage with the heat coming up. You would also be able to say that in 2025, you supported an energy plan that would provide for security, food security. These are terms that you could use so that the public could realize what you did, what you supported: relief for the community, safety for the community, security, and public education on the impact of climate change. So consider that you could keep your positions in the future elections by pointing out that you stood for relief, for security. You had the vision in 2025 to seek the solutions that inevitably the heat crisis is going to bring to us. So I would say in conclusion that it would be wise for you to form a task force on climate-ready communities, so you could show that you responded to the needs of the community. You could say in your speech in the future, "I stood for relief for the community, for support for the community, for security, because I wanted solutions for my community." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ashton Maddox, Adrian Raze, and Renee Garcia. Good morning.
Hello and good morning. My name is Ashton Maddox. I'm an organizer with GNCLEO, and I'm here advocating for the county to please consider the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan laid out before you today. Quite simply, the time for bold action on climate change is now. The Hillsborough County Affordable Energy and Climate Plan presents a unique opportunity to not only protect our environment, but also the economic future of our growing county and its residents. For too long, we've relied on fossil fuels, leading to unpredictable and rising energy costs. The good news, however, is that renewable energy sources like solar and wind power are now cheaper than ever before. By embracing the plan and transitioning to cleaner energy sources, we can not only lower our energy bills by reducing our reliance on expensive fossil fuels and take advantage of the falling cost of renewable energy. We can not only increase our energy independence by reducing our dependence on volatile fossil fuel markets, but we can also stimulate our local economy by creating jobs in the growing renewable energy sector. The Hillsborough County Affordable Energy and Climate Plan provides a roadmap for this crucial transition. It outlines ambitious but achievable goals for reducing our reliance on fossil fuels and increasing our use of clean energy that would lead us to a more sustainable energy future. I, as a person coming before you, urge the County Commission to embrace this plan and take decisive action. The health of our community, the well-being of our environment, and the prosperity of our future depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Adrian here. If not, Renee Garcia, Stephen Kaufman, and then Alyssa White. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Renee Garcia, but thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you guys this morning. I just want to begin by saying that I am born and raised in Florida, and I currently live in Hillsborough County. I'm a student and a member of the Hillsborough County Affordable Energy Coalition. Floridians have taken note of the increasing frequency and intensity of storms such as those seen in this last hurricane season. Hillsborough County felt the impact of flooding in unexpected areas, destruction of homes and businesses, and power outages that lasted for days for some residents. I can speak to that personally. These intense storms have strengthened by our reliance on fossil fuels, which utility companies play a significant role in through large hydrocarbon emissions. You may have noticed that it has been hotter than usual lately for the winter months, which carry over to the summer and hurricane season, allowing for these intense storms to form. Some areas in Hillsborough County are still rebuilding after hurricanes, which makes me and other residents wonder how bad potential damages might be for this upcoming hurricane season, which is about four months away. We can mitigate the impact of these storms with the proposed plan the Hillsborough County Affordable Energy Coalition has drafted. The Affordable Energy and Climate Plan stipulates methods to prevent these issues and ease the stress that we have placed upon the environment and the consumer, especially in an economy of increasing costs of rent, groceries, and now utility bills. This plan outlines methods to transition from fossil fuels to renewable energies and informs our community about incentives such as buyback programs to reduce the energy cost for individual homes and businesses. We also stipulate plans on reducing our heat island effects through the creation of green spaces, updating existing infrastructure to mitigate climate risks, and investing and expanding public transportation, among other goals. The work has been done for you guys, so I asked the Hillsborough County Board, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, to consider adopting the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan to ensure a safer and cleaner Florida. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Stephen Kaufman. Then we have Alyssa White, and then Bobby Ewing, who's virtual. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Steve Kaufman, pastor in the area, Lutheran Church in America, and also a member of the Affordable Energy Task Force. And here on behalf of the League of Women Voters, some of you know the League of Women Voters as a group that supports and sustains our ability to cast our votes safely, intelligently, wisely, and promote public policy that makes sense. So I'm here for that reason, and I'm here to support the very plan you've heard referenced over the last few minutes. My hope, I guess, is that perhaps it's time that we could share these ideas on a level playing field with you. If staff would be willing to accept a proposal that we're discussing and perhaps find ways to publicly discuss that, whether it be workshops or give-and-take with commissioners, we would hope that something in this plan might just tickle your fancy. It may be something you believe you could support. I know we've been driving home the cost of energy. I know we've talked a lot about TECO. These are concerns of me as well, but I have a larger, broader concern, and that is for the environment itself, the environment that my wife and I so envied when we moved here 15 years ago from Michigan. And Michigan's a beautiful state, too, but it's nothing like Florida, and we have so much to cherish. If you will allow me a minute, I'm going to just quote from a small section of the plan that talks about creating climate-ready and accessible communities, one of my favorite concerns. Creating infrastructure that increases accessibility of our county to all residents, including but not limited to cooling stations in high-foot traffic areas that could address public health concerns, shaded areas over our bus stops, dedicated bus and bike lanes on roadways to promote safe solutions, establishing community gardens to promote food security, removal of invasive species through county landscaping teams, the beautification of our county parks, the public education and engagement events addressing these concerns. My friends, these are concerns you have and I have, my constituents, my congregations have. Can't we work together to find what we can do to forward this environmental concern, this need for us to make a difference and continue to put Hillsborough County and Florida on the map as one of the most beautiful places in the world?
Thank you, sir. Alyssa White, and then we have Bobby Ewing and William Lips, both virtual. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alyssa White, and I'm the Climate Justice Organizer with Florida Student Power and a member of the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition. I'm here to urge you to implement the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan presented by us today. This plan is a critical step towards making energy more affordable for residents while also addressing climate resilience in our county. Right now, too many Hillsborough County residents are struggling to pay their bills, especially while still recovering from both Hurricanes Helene and Milton. Families are forced to make impossible choices, whether to keep the lights on or put food on the table. Energy costs continue to rise, and without action from you all, more of our neighbors will literally be left in the dark. One of the key components of this plan is ensuring public involvement and education, because for any energy initiatives to succeed, our community must be informed, engaged, and educated. Today, I ask you to commit to the following. Firstly, hold regular public workshops to hear residents' concerns and provide clear solutions. Secondly, showcase green building demonstration projects in public spaces to help residents see firsthand how they can lower their energy costs. Thirdly, host quarterly county information sessions to guide residents through available energy programs, grants, and financial assistance. Lastly, include bilingual information and tax and utility mailing so that all residents, regardless of language or income, can have access to these critical resources. These steps are not just about sustainability, they are about survival. We need a county-wide plan to make energy more affordable for the people who need it most. Please act now to put this plan into motion. I thank you.
Thank you. We have Bobby Ewing and William Lips that are virtual, and then Bonnie Hoffman. Is Mr. Ewing on the line?
Mr. Chair, Bobby did not sign in.
All right, how about William Lips?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is William Lips, and I'm here today as a conservative resident student advocate for a more prosperous and secure future for Hillsborough County. Thank you for this opportunity. Environmental challenges are impacting us now. We see it in increasing intense hurricanes, rising temperatures, and strained infrastructure. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration tracks billion-dollar weather and climate disasters. Their data consistently shows an increasing trend in the number and cost of these events, highlighting the growing economic impact of extreme weather. The Affordable Energy and Climate Plan offers a solution, tackling the challenges while benefiting our community. This plan provides a roadmap for reducing our reliance on volatile fossil fuels, lowering energy costs, investing in clean energy like solar and wind. It's about both environmental responsibility and economic sense. Supporting this plan offers key advantages: lower energy bills. This plan reduces reliance on fluctuating fossil fuel prices and capitalizing on decreasing renewable energy costs. Labored-wise, cost of energy analysis demonstrates the declining cost of renewable energy making it increasingly competitive with traditional sources. This translates to direct savings for residents, strengthening resilience. The plan invests in updated infrastructure and sustained public transportation. The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council and the Florida Department of Transportation have published reports detailing specific infrastructure vulnerabilities in the region. This protects our homes, businesses, and essential services. This also helps with simulated economic growth. This plan creates jobs in the clean energy sector and supports local businesses. Investing in clean energy has been shown to stimulate local economies and create new job opportunities. This positions Hillsborough County as a clean energy leader, if they accept this plan. Hillsborough County has already experienced the effects of severe weather. The plan offers concrete solutions to mitigate these risks and ensure our community remains livable and affordable. The time for action is now. I urge the County Commission to embrace the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan. Our future, our economy, and the well-being of Hillsborough County residents depends on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Bonnie Hoffman. Bonnie here? Not followed by Isabella Muller, and then Denise Herndon.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Isabella Muller, and I'm an environmental science student at USF, as well as a member of the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition. And this past summer, I interned with Food and Water Watch, where I helped draft the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan. And while working on this, I was surprised that many of these policies weren't already in place, especially given Hillsborough County's vulnerability to climate-related events such as extreme heat, droughts, and hurricanes, which we all know heavily impacted us this past year. And so recognizing this gap, the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition took the initiative upon themselves to develop a comprehensive plan to protect Tampa Bay communities from rising utility costs and escalating climate impacts. A key component of this plan is expanding energy efficiency and weatherization programs to make electricity more affordable for residents and businesses. And some of the items in this section include conducting county-wide energy audits, upgrading county-owned buildings to meet the highest energy efficiency standards, assisting homes and businesses in accessing energy efficiency programs, updating building codes to promote energy efficiency, and expanding access to weatherization programs in Florida. And additionally, our plan calls for leveraging federal funding and grants to provide energy efficiency upgrades for high-energy burdened households and small businesses. And this is especially relevant, given that Hillsborough County has been awarded a $709 billion grant, or million-dollar grant, for disaster relief, economic revitalization, and mitigation. And energy efficiency and weatherization directly align with these objectives, and the county can start moving on these initiatives now to lower residents' energy bills while strengthening protections against future extreme weather events. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to adopt the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan and incorporate it into the plan for the Community Development Block Grant. With funding already available, there is no excuse for inaction. The time to protect and strengthen Hillsborough County is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muller. Denise Herndon, and followed by Jason Kimball, who's virtual. And then the last speaker this morning is Jason Furger. Good morning.
I'm Denise Herndon. I'm a strong-willed, persistent little piss. I've spoken before concerning your computers, this video cam, the words, the Sheriff's Department being hacked into. I just confirmed when I had gone Monday of a sheriff incident on February 13, 2021. It was a drive-by shooting at a gas station. It's a misdemeanor. When I went and got the report this past Monday, everything that was in my home has been changed to the report that is now Monday. I gave the aide to one of your Commissioners this report way early in the year, and on July 17 of 2024, that aide told me he can't find that report. There's something going on, and I'm going to prove that you county Commissioners have a big problem with your computer system. You had a data breach in July 2023. This is just a smokescreen. I've mentioned this before, and I'm not going to stop, and non-action with you Commissioners isn't going to solve the problem. And your IT department just saying it's a glitch. Everybody's come to the conclusion that if we can't explain it, it's a glitch. A computer only knows what you tell it to, and when AI comes around, it's going to be even different. There's going to start being a lot of lawsuits when I prove, and I will prove, that a sheriff deputy falsified report, and it's been going on for years, way before computers. deputy falsified report, and it's been going on for years, way before computers, accusing people, people being put in death row, and never, years later, when DNA testing comes out, it's been proven that it's wrong. I'm going to start suing a grocery store. I don't care if people think I'm homeless, but I care when they call law enforcement and lie on me and say that I'm doing something I'm not. Jeff Bezos wasn't rich in 96 when I spoke to him on the phone when he wanted me to invest in Amazon. And I find out in 2001, 2002, he's in the dark web. When Shirley Hammond moves next door to me, I find out from her, she's my son's school bus driver, she drugged my son and got him raped at 10 and 1/2 years old. You commissioners, this is going on more than anybody knows, and watch and see. I will expose the reebs, and every commissioner on here should know what a reeb is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Is Jason Kimball on the line?
Yes, thank you so much. Good morning to all the Commissioners. So I'd like to discuss an item from the last meeting regarding removing the fluoride from the county water. I think it's absurd that this is even an issue to discuss and that it wasn't easily passed. So first of all, the vast majority of the fluorides in the water is in there naturally. So from the numbers that I was looking at, you're talking about removing less than 30% of the fluoride in the water, number one. Number two, in the published literature, it's not disputed the harmful effects of fluoride. It's well documented across various different peer-reviewed journals, not disputed. What is argued is whether or not a certain level is beneficial, what level is harmful. They're arguing over levels. And I saw Commissioner Cohen, for instance, suggest a workshop, which sounds reasonable, but there's no data that can be presented to justify the addition of fluoride into Hillsborough County water. You would need randomized controlled trials on Hillsborough County residents, which doesn't exist. The data does not exist to continue adding fluoride to the water, given all of the evidence presented throughout the years and all of these various different journals, including people who actually think that low levels of fluoride can be beneficial. For instance, there's this paper published in the Royal Society of Chemistry Environmental Science Journal, and these are not anti-fluoride researchers, and they clearly say, it's a well-referenced paper, over 100 references, that fluoride can cause cognitive impairment, epilepsy, depression, degeneration of eye, Alzheimer's, neurotoxicity, lower IQ level, Parkinson's, thyroid dysfunction, asthma, abdominal pain, metabolic syndrome, loss of muscle power, arthritis, infertility, lower sex drive, various cancers. And you can go ahead and search the published literature either on Google Scholar or PubMed, and you'll see papers supporting all of this. Like I said, well-referenced paper from people who think it's crucial to have low levels of fluoride in the water. But there's simply no evidence. Given all of the dangers, there's no randomized controlled trials. The only trials that I was able to find were trials on dental varnish. No one's trying to remove fluoride from the toothpaste or from dental varnish, so the evidence is inadequate. I would say that this is something that should be addressed today. There should be a motion to amend the agenda and get this simple, super-simple thing passed. And then I do believe that we should have a workshop to discuss removing the rest of the fluoride, most of it, from the water to be in line with Japan's levels, for instance, which were about seven times higher than Japan. And like, this is a serious issue. There should be a motion at every meeting, because it's such a simple issue to address. We need the full board to vote on this, and I do hope it gets promptly addressed and removed from the water. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker this morning, Jason Furger. Is Jason here? All right, if not, that closes the public comment. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wostel voted no.
Bonnie, first item.
The first item is Item B1. This is to review and approve the 2025 Hillsborough County State Legislative Agenda, and Cameron Pennant will present this item. Brandon Wagner is here as well.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners, County staff, members of the public. For the record, Cameron Pennant, Director of Government Relations for Hillsborough County. Per your request, we have updates to the 2025 State Legislative Agenda. On the project side, we have $36.1 million in project requests, all of which have been filed in the Florida House, and we're currently working on getting sponsors and getting it filed in the Florida Senate. On the policy side, we have 18 policy requests with updates and changes. From our last meeting, we have one deletion. The Sunshine Law has been removed as a policy item. We have two additions: support for the Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller's budget request. In addition, we have recommenders listed on all requests, as well on the document. Two revisions: Commissioner Cohen will be listed as the recommender for the fertilizer ban, and the Customer Service Department will be listed as a recommender for home address exemption for county staff. With these changes and updates, we defer to the board for approval.
All right, thank you, sir. Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Wostel.
I just wanted to caution everybody on this, that a yes vote will signal to the public that you support subsidizing billionaires off of the back of the working-class citizens.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Please record your vote. Now, Commissioner Cohen.
You know, I think that all of us are trying here to be polite and not nitpick at each other's items, and I would just leave it at that.
Okay, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wostel voted no.
Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is to approve an amended and restated interlocal joint project agreement, and Lisa Ray with Water Resources will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Lisa Ray, Water Resources Director, and I'm here to present Agenda Item B3. This is to approve the amended and restated interlocal joint project agreement between Tampa Bay Water and Hillsborough County for the construction of the South Hillsborough Pipeline Project. This pipeline will bring much-needed drinking water from Tampa Bay Water's regional plant up by P-SOC to our existing Lithia Plant and also down to our future water plant that will be located in the Palm area. In addition to the joint project agreement, there is also an approval for a budget amendment to realign $45 million, and we do recommend approval on this item. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's a pleasure of the board.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote on B3.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Hey, Bonnie.
Thank you. The next item is B4. This is from the Clerk of the Court regarding the Rules of Order Review Committee.
This item is to appoint board members to the Rules of Order Review Committee. We do this after every election, and normally we do it by volunteers. You will be joined by the county administration, county attorney, as well as clerk's office.
One question that I had, I know last, I guess, two years ago, there were some commissioners that wanted to make several changes. I don't know if that's the case today, but is this committee required?
No.
Per our policy, we have to bring it up.
We have to bring it up, yes, but is it required? No.
Okay, so I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, if there's interest in...
I'd like to suggest that we dispense with it this year.
I'll second that.
It's a motion.
If that's a motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Wostel. No one else in the queue? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, good job, Rick. Next item.
I'm stalling till 10 o'clock. Let's see.
Do you appointments?
We could do board appointments. Yes, sir. So you have two board appointments, F1A and F1B, for the County Internal Audit Committee and the Healthcare Advisory Board.
Today, our first board for appointment is the County Internal Audit Committee. We have two applicants. Please choose one. Commissioner Hagan?
One.
Commissioner Miller?
Two.
Commissioner Myers?
One.
Commissioner Cohen?
One.
Commissioner Cameron Sebetta?
Two.
Commissioner Bowles?
One.
Commissioner Wostel?
Two.
The board has appoint number one, Kevin Langley. The next board is the Healthcare Advisory Board. For this board, we have three positions open, and Commissioners will need to choose one per position. The first position that we are going to vote on will be at-large representative. Commissioner Hagan?
Three.
Commissioner Miller?
Three.
Commissioner Meyer?
Three.
Commissioner Cohen?
Three.
Commissioner Cameron Sebetta?
Five.
Commissioner Bowles?
Three.
Commissioner Wostel?
Five.
For at-large representative, we have Sarah Dodds. The next position is the non-healthcare business community representative. Commissioner Hagan, please choose one.
Five.
Commissioner Miller?
Five.
Commissioner Myers?
Five.
Commissioner Cohen?
Five.
Commissioner Cameron Sebetta?
Five.
Commissioner Bowles?
Five.
Commissioner Wostel?
Five.
The board has selected Clara Reynolds. And for the net provider hospital, we only have two applicants, but Sarah Dodds has been selected as the at-large representative. That would leave Mr. Stephen Harris as the only applicant.
All right, can we have a motion to confirm?
I'd move to confirm all three: Sarah Dodds, Clara Reynolds, and Stephen Harris.
Second.
And Langley from the Audit Committee.
Oh, yes, yes.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote to confirm.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie.
Thank you. The next item is Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments of the substantial amendment to the Plan Year Annual Action Plan. Brenda Brackens with Affordable Housing will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brenda Brackens, Affordable Housing Director. We're here to present Item D1, to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendment to the Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan, also to close the public comment period that began on January 31, and adopt this substantial amendment to the action plan. This plan includes $1 million of RUSH funding that we receive for our emergency solution grants, and that's to support homeless individuals and those that are at risk of homelessness. This is a public hearing.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? All right, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote on D1.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is also a public hearing. This is to adopt amendments to the Hillsborough County Construction Code, and Julia Mandell from the County Attorney's Office will present this item. Adam Gormley, Josh Bellotti, Cameron Clark-Roll, available, as well as Will Shepherd with the Property Appraisers Office on line.
Good morning, Julia.
Thank you and good morning. I'm Julia Mandell with the County Attorney's Office, and I'm here to present Item D2. This is a proposed ordinance amending the definition of market value contained in the Hillsborough County Construction Code. This revision is being directed by the Florida Division of Emergency Management and FEMA in order to comply with their standards. This revision removes the fix factor currently within the definition. Also here today, as mentioned by Ms. Wise, is Will Shepherd, who's on the line, and we have Adam Gormley, Kyle Dolman, and Josh Bellotti from Public Works, Adam Gormley from Development Services. This is a public hearing, and you will need to take public comment if there is any here to provide that. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Good morning.
Good morning. Denise Herndon. I can only use the computer at the library, and for some reason, the agenda doesn't come up at the library. A librarian has helped me with this. Three times I've gotten on, some I didn't. I don't know how this affects our property taxes. That's what I'm concerned with. It may not concern county department budgets, but how is this going to affect the market value on the appraisal of our homes? Because that's going to affect the taxes that we pay. I had asked this morning about somebody helping me to understand what these issues are, and I don't know how far in advance that you have to have this agenda put together. I know the public is only given access to it the Monday before the county commissioners' meeting, or 48 hours, and no one that signed you in has knowledge of this. I would like to have somebody get in touch with me concerning the issues on these agendas so that the public can get up and speak. Some are very self-explanatory, but a lot of them aren't. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the item? Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd, you're on the line.
Mr. Shepherd, can you hear us?
I see him. He just unmuted.
Mr. Shepherd, are you there?
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. This is Commissioner Wostel. Thanks for jumping on here today. Just to answer my question real quick, the language in this seems to suggest that it's going to authorize the property appraiser to increase the value of the home, and all I'm looking for today is censure the legal representation for the property appraisers' office, that this would in no way ever allow or subject the property owner to have or be subjected to an increase in property tax assessments on the assessed value of their home, or in any way jeopardize the protections of the Save Our Homes Act that protects them from more than the 3% annual CPI increase.
You are correct on all fronts there. This factor has no relevance to how the property appraiser does his job. This is a number based on data developed by the Department of Revenue that they provide each year, but that information is provided actually after the tax rule is completed. So not only is it not used by the property appraiser, but it couldn't be used by the property appraiser. So this data has been provided by the Department of Revenue for decades, actually, so this is not new information, and this is not going to be used by the property appraiser, nor could it with regard to either Save Our Homes or the assessed values of property for property taxes.
Okay, and with that on the record, I'll move for approval.
I got a motion by Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, next item.
Thank you. And the next public hearing is Item D3. This is to receive citizens' input and discuss whether to arbitrate two Tampa Bay Water Use Permit applications, and Kevin Moran will take us through this public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kevin Moran, Environmental Services Division Director. This is a public hearing to allow for comments on two Tampa Bay Water Use Permit applications. The first permit application is a request to modify the existing Baum Farm Water Use Permit Number 21046.000. This modification consists of transferring existing permitted groundwater withdrawals from Farmland Reserve, Inc., and Land Reserve, Inc. Tampa Bay Water is acquiring the rights to 5,171,400 gallons per day of groundwater from these two companies. The second permit application is a request to modify the existing South Central Hillsborough Regional Wellfield Water Use Permit Number 20004352.0010. This modification consists of transferring... This modification consists of transferring existing permitted groundwater withdrawals from Tampa Electric Company. The total quantity of groundwater being transferred is 1,972,700 gallons per day. The groundwater will be used to supply drinking water to existing and future customers of Hillsborough County's Water Resources Department Potawatara System. Tampa Bay Water's permit applications demonstrate the increased pumping at their well locations does not have any offsite impacts. Hillsborough County staff recommends that Hillsborough County does not request arbitration for these permits. This is a public hearing, and staff is here to answer questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Denise Herndon. I've been a respiratory therapist over 30 years and can't work at it. For almost six years, it'll be in July because of an awesome miracle God is performing with me. Working in the medical field, they use a lot of water, but there's a lot of waste there, too. When toilets continuously flush, when sinks continuously drip, and this happens in the county buildings also. I understand we're using a lot of water, but there needs to be something done with, especially the county restrooms. These automatic toilets are ridiculous. They waste water. I've used them, and sometimes it flushes four times before I'm even finished, and I'm just urinating. There's a problem with this, and that's a lot of water wasted. That's just one toilet in a county facility. So there's something that county needs to do. You can't do everything, but, you know, way back in the wars, they had to ration gas. Is this something that we're going to need to do? Because you keep pumping water out of the ground, we're going to start getting sinkholes. Something has to be done. You just don't keep increasing the usage because, oh, there's more demand. There has to be a restriction of some kind. I know, looking through things, that people are charged. When people are charged way above what is normal, they should be excessively charged to hit this in their pocket, and then they'll start conserving their water. I have a well-inseptic tank. I still conserve my water. It's coming out of the ground. Something, the county commissioners can do something with our county restrooms. The library restroom at Brandon, they removed the automatic toilet and the handicap. I'm not even handicapped, but because I have to carry stuff with me, I have a cart, and I'm not going to leave it out anywhere. This is the only place, besides one other place recently, that I've left that out. What's happening to a handicap person? If that toilet was flushing on me four times, I don't take as much as a handicap person. So you county commissioners need to look into stopping the dripping faucets. Get rid of your automatic flushes, toilets, because they're not working. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the item? I wish to pleasure the board. Commissioner Cohen?
Yes. Just to point out, the first of these two items is not an increase. It's actually a transfer of use from agricultural to residential. The second is a small increase in groundwater withdrawal, and I will move that we direct the staff not to arbitrate this item.
I got a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Wustel. Please accord your vote on D3.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Hey, Bonnie?
Perhaps we have time for Commissioner Cameron Sepeda's two items, item F2 and F3. Commissioner, if you're ready? Regarding veterans, counseling veterans. For the first one, item F2. Yes, I have a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, second by Commissioner Cohen. Don't see anyone in the queue. Please accord your vote on F2.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And the second is item F3 regarding changes to the Crisis Center contract.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda.
Motion for approval?
Motion by Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, second Commissioner Wustel. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
And the next item is Commissioner Myers' item, item F4 regarding a modification to the contract for the Delta Torch Foundation.
Commissioner Myers?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item?
How about that for timing? Item E1, at 10:15, we have a special appearance by Victor Criss, Hillsborough County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to come and greet you and thank you and give you a heads up of what's going on over at the clerk's office. First, I'd like to thank you for passing our portion of your agenda earlier today and your legislative agenda. It's a partnership. I'm sure that it's going to be beneficial to you and the constituents of Hillsborough County as we move forward. I'd like to go ahead and introduce my transition team, but first, I'd like to thank each of you. Commissioner Wustel, Commissioner Bowles, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Hagan, Commissioner Myers, Harry, and Commissioner Sepeda, thank you so much for your time and your consideration. Coming into this office has been a very difficult task. It is a very, as Harry would tell you, it's a very difficult office. It has 702 employees. We manage your $10 billion cash in and cash out, accounts payable and receivables and payrolls. We also manage your $5.3 billion investment portfolio. We literally have an entire brokerage firm in-house managing, you know, your monies in the market. So there's a lot of responsibility. We provide you with clerking services. We provide the courts with clerking services. We provide, you know, data retention and historical and vital records retention. There's over 1,000 duties that go on in this office, and it's been a while since anyone's ever peeled back the layers of the onion. And that's what I'm trying to do, is run the office and while running the office, peeling back those layers of the onion. In order to do that, I brought in a transition team of specialists, and I want to induce them to you today. My transition team first is my interim temporary chief of staff, Bill Barrett. Bill, if you could stand? Bill has an extensive background as a chief of staff to a high-ranking House member in the Florida House, and to a high-ranking senator in the State Senate, and to our former agricultural commissioner. So he comes with those experiences. He also comes with legislative experiences. He lobbied the halls of Tallahassee for years on behalf of cities and sheriffs. So he has worked with governmental entities in that process and has a strong working knowledge of it. So far, he's been doing a great job at that capacity, and he has surprised himself and me, and I think the rest of us. But Bill is acting as chief of staff. I've asked Mary Lou to stay on board for 90 days as an assistant chief of staff, providing him with assistance in the transition, and she's been very good at doing that. I wanted to have some consistency as why we go in and make reforms, and it's been a nice partnership for the period of time that we've been doing it so far. Next, I have Eric Coleman. He is a retired Navy officer. He was a commander on a big ship, but most importantly, he graduated top of his class from Annapolis, and he was the admiral's troubleshooter. So he is handling special services, looking at human resources. I put him first into the courts. He'll be graduating from there into here and then other places within the organization, looking at what we are doing well, what we aren't doing so well, and what we need to do to make improvements and how those improvements would take place. The next is Mark Downing. Some of you may recognize Mark. He retired from Tampa Electric. He was their manager of risk management, and he is our interim clerk specialist, looking at our risk management. And we've got a lot of, as Commissioner Cohen would tell you, a lot of areas of potential risk that need to be evaluated, and that's what he's doing. I had him start with our policy manual. We're looking at all 67 clerks, and we're looking at yours and the court's policies to make sure that we align with everyone. And the policy manual will become our, for lack of better words, our bible to work from once it is re-implemented. Our brains. This guy comes from Duke University, did his undergraduate at Yale, did his graduate at Harvard, and just finished up his postgraduate at Duke. He's a brainiac, and I brought him on board to assess the data that we're bringing in and come up with recommendations for organizational redevelopment, and that is Mr. Hermey Santiago. Hermey?
Rick Van Anzel, as you know, is the guy that's appointed here, and Rick, you're doing a great job. We're very happy with you, and I've heard from the board that they're happy with you. But there's always room for improvement, and Rick will be improving. We're going to keep polishing the apple. I understand that he is well-versed and certified in parliamentary procedures, so when I served on this adias, that was something that we badly needed, and I'm glad to see that that capacity is here. Feel free to draw on him when there are questions about parliamentary procedure and your rules. He's well-versed in both. Glenda, I hear you're doing a wonderful job as well. Thank you for your service, and we appreciate you. Again, quite simply, you know, we are going to take a close look at this organization. We're going to capitalize on what we're doing well. We're going to expand and improve on what we aren't doing so well, and we're eventually going to be recognized as, for lack of better words, your special forces. I view our relationship as more than a partnership. I view you as a client, and we're here to serve you, to make sure that we can provide to you, Bonnie, the very best services that your team, this board, and the county could possibly expect, and to do the same for our courts, our sheriffs, our public defenders, and our state attorneys. And if there's any questions, I'd like to go ahead and answer them.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Senator Criss. It's great to see you. As many of you know, I worked for the clerk's office for many years for Pat Frank, who was the clerk just prior to Cindy Stewart. And back in, I would say, 2006 or 2007, there were a lot of leaks and a lot of difficulty out at the records center with the roof. And at that time, all of the records that were stored there were paper, and they were extremely voluminous. There's also ancient documents, there's evidence, there's a lot of really sensitive items that were there. And at the time, we had respected of then-county administrator Pat Bean, we made a request similar to what Victor is requesting now, and the request wasn't granted. It was a very, it was a very tight economic time for the county, and what we agreed to do was to essentially patch the roof or put a new membrane on it, do something to extend its life. And at the time, I remember it was like a 15-year type of window that looked to be ahead of us, and it seemed like a long time, and I figured, oh, well, that's the end of that issue. But I realize now that it's been way longer than 15 years since the last time we revisited that, and I just wanted to say to the board that this item that we've added to the legislative agenda to be supportive of their request for a facility, in my view, is really, really important, because if we have a type of storm situation in the next few years like we had this past year, the possibility that we could have a catastrophic loss of records is, I think, very, very real. And it may extend over to the Supervisor of Elections' operations as well, because they're covered by the same roof. But I just wanted to tell everyone that this is something that has been going on, and the need has been there for a long, long time. But thank you.
I don't see anyone else in the queue, but I just want to say, Senator Criss, I want you to know I appreciate that you hit the ground running, you know, with this office and forming an exceptional team around you, and I'm confident in you and your team's ability to do a great job, so. And thank you for your brevity this morning as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respect my three-minute warning. I know what you can do as a chairman. I don't want that gavel thrown at me, so.
No, but you're doing a great job, Senator Criss, and we very much appreciate it.
Thank you. I respect all of you. I look forward to working with each of you. From time to time, you're going to need information, you're going to need some assistance. You know, I've got 702 people that are at your disposal. Feel free to call on me, to call on them. We've already helped a couple of you at the adias, and I'm willing to work with all of you, and thank you, sir, for the time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, Bonnie?
Yes, we can move on to Commissioner Miller's item, item F5. This is to receive a status report and update from staff on activities proposed to investigate historic stormwater flooding that occurred during the 2024 hurricane season. And we have John Dinges with Black and Beach, who's going to present this item. We also have our staff here, Josh Bellotti and Kim Byer, who can provide some updates.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning, Chair Hagan, Commissioners. We're going to get this presentation up and running. It's very brief. I could probably do it also within three minutes, but then obviously be glad to answer your questions this morning. It looks like, here we go.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Don't know if that's visible, but okay, you can see that. Very good. My first time before you. So thank you for the opportunity to provide this update. Just so we can keep this in front of us, the project framework, the objectives and tasks, we've seen this previously in the middle of January when you had an update. So our three objectives are to evaluate cumulative flooding impacts, evaluate stormwater needs, and develop conceptual recommendations. So we have our current phase work, phase one work that's ongoing through the tasks that you see listed, one, two, and three, and then there's some anticipated tasks upcoming that will continue the work once we are further along in phase one of this effort. So the meat of this update is here. For each of these tasks, our data collection and evaluation is ongoing. We have received a tremendous amount of information from the staff. They've been very helpful, providing all the data to us that we need, and with most of that, we have received, and we're evaluating that, coupled with that. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to meet with you and collect information from you, as well as city council members from the city of Tampa. There's been four of those that we've met with as well and received their information. Our preliminary analysis of the flooding using the data and the other information we've collected is in progress, and we expect some, that data to give us some results this coming month, and we're excited to share that information. Our stakeholder engagement is another prong of this effort that's moving in parallel with our data analysis, and so far, we've completed several stakeholder engagement opportunities with Town and Country Neighborhood. I personally attended that one. The Southwest Florida Water Management District had a meeting with the Shangri-La community last week. I attended that. I've had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and city manager of Plant City yesterday and collect information from them, and upcoming, we have another community, Twin Branch Acres, that we're going to meet with. That feeds into a broader effort. I had the opportunity last week to meet with Eddie Birch and the communications team, and we're framing the public engagement approach and scheduling that for mid-April. So we're putting the pieces of that together, and the vision was to get out into the community and have engagement, structured engagement opportunities to do two things, and that is to receive, to educate on what we're doing and what we're finding, but number two, receive input through your engagement hub, and I think that's an exciting opportunity to get that done coming up very soon. Some additional detail on data collection, review, and evaluation, this, I won't read this slide, you'll have this available, glad to answer any questions, but this is a summary of the kinds of information that we've received, and we're continuing to take in, ingest, and digest, and analyze all this information. Some more detail on stakeholder engagement. This is a list of the stakeholder engagement that's been completed, and as I mentioned, we have public involvement coming up very soon, and we're looking forward to that opportunity. I think that's going to be further informative. One thing we find is that the more we get out into the communities and talk, as you would expect, we sit with them, and we learn more and more about what happened, and that's invaluable time spent, I really believe, so. And then finally, you've seen this before, just to keep kind of the outcomes in front of everybody, the potential capital and policy considerations are as listed here. One of those that we're already engaged in is interagency collaboration. One of those that we're already engaged in is inter-agency collaboration. Having met with Plant City, the Water Management District, we will continue those efforts between now and June. And we want to bring back recommendations to you in time for the, I hate to say it, the upcoming hurricane season, but it's coming, we got to be prepared. So we heard that loud and clear. You need recommendations. We'll be collaborating with staff and with the board to bring that. Glad to answer any questions, Commissioners.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Wueston?
Do you want to go first? Okay. I'm not going to worry about your work product when it comes. I know it's going to be great. How did the meeting at Shangri-La go?
It was, it was informative. It was good. And I've received a lot of information personally. I think it was clear that the Water Management District has some opportunity to force some due diligence on their end with their regulated systems. And the county residents, I'm sorry, the community residents are very clear that they're looking for a solution to that flooding. And there's more than one part of that. One is that they're, you know, they want something potentially more permanent for their flood relief, but they're also concerned about the way the permits have been, have been issued for the developments in those areas and whether or not they're in compliance. So I hope there wasn't too much information, but it was a good meeting.
My aide and I went out there when it was still, I mean, you, as you stood, we were sitting in some old Marine, I think he was Marine, might have been Army, home, and you could see the plateau of the water even with our eyesight over the berm. That's just how low they were. So it's just going to be a very complicated situation, I think, out there. But I really look forward to seeing you guys' work. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Chair. Stormwater management remains one of the most pressing challenges facing our county. As we continue to experience increased development and changing weather patterns, it's critical that we take proactive steps to address flooding, water quality, and infrastructure concerns. To ensure transparency and keep our community informed, I'm requesting that staff continue to provide dedicated updates on stormwater initiatives at one board meeting, one board meeting each month. These updates will allow us to track ongoing assessments, mitigation efforts, and potential solutions while also giving our citizens a clear understanding of the actions this board is taking. I would also like to take a moment to thank Kim Byer and her team on Public Works for their dedication and efforts in keeping the county informed on stormwater issues. Her leadership and commitment to continuing the communication are essential as we work towards effective and sustainable solutions. By working collaboratively with staff, stakeholders, and the public, we can develop sustainable strategies that protect our neighborhoods, waterways, and infrastructure. I look forward to continuing these discussions and the opportunity to engage with our communities. Again, thank you for this presentation.
Thank you. We got a motion by Commissioner Miller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wueston. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Bonnie?
Thank you. It is 10:30, so we can move on to item B2. This is to select, approve, and execute a 10-year agreement with the highest-ranked firm, which is Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company, for the county's self-funded group health plan. Scott Stromer is here to present this item. Ivy Martin with Human Resources is here. And we also have Cigna represented as that's needed. Thank you, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Stromer for Cammer Services. As stated, B2 is asking the board to select, approve, and execute a 10-year agreement with the highest-ranked and best-qualified firm, Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company, for administration of the county's self-funded group health plan at a total estimated cost of $26,401,000. Additionally, authorize the county administrator to approve Cigna-funded benefits and wellness program annually, as well as approve additional group health-related programs and services administered by Cigna up to $150,000 per year if deemed to be in the county's and employees' best interest. For Cammer Services does recommend approval. And as County Administrator said, the representatives from Human Resources, the Baldwin Group, who is the county's consultant in this respect, are for this procurement, and Cigna are here to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Wueston?
Thank you very much. I'm going to use the Elmo real quick. I appreciate Cigna. You guys would have seen this a lot sooner. I appreciate Cigna trying to be transparent. Unfortunately, our consultant dropped the ball whenever they were provided the information. If you recall, I asked for a lot of PBM information several months ago. It was provided, and then just kind of sat and didn't go anywhere, basically. But I have it. I'm going to show you a couple of examples here. I'm not really, especially since I wasn't provided the information in near enough time. And also, when I asked for the information, I truly had no idea that our insurance provider owns their own PBM. That was a new reality for me. But I think, I think that Cigna is a good insurance company, and out of the ones that applied, they were probably the best option that we had. So I'm not really trying to convince any of you to change your vote or not support the item, because the reality is, is that you're stuck into a position now where you can't jeopardize the employees not having healthcare, not having a proper healthcare provider. What I'm asking is for you to, whoever moves to approve it, that you consider a friendly amendment to direct the county attorney in one year's time to come back with an analysis on the alternatives that do exist in the healthcare world, especially when it comes to the RX side of the House. I'm not informed enough on the medical side, and honestly, it's, there's so much convoluted information to do with HIPAA, it would have been too much of a rabbit hole to go down. So I'm going to start, I asked for all of our payments from, that we paid to our healthcare provider. Of course, it surprised me to understand that many of these go through the PBM. Of course, they route you through their own company as a revenue stream, which really irked me, but it's a reality that we live in, and Cigna is trying to exist in, in the reality of the insurance company that, that they've been pigeonholed into because of lobbyists at the federal government level. So I understand that they're a business that's trying to operate in a world that's been, that's been formed around them. So with that, I went through an extensive list. I'm only going to show you three examples, because as you can imagine, there's, there's hundreds of thousands of RX transactions that happened over the year of data that was analyzed to me, and that would be nauseating for everybody in the room. So I'm going to go over three examples to really highlight. If I receive any pushback, and if anybody tries to say, well, these were just formulas, I will say that, yes, these were formulas to absolutely maximize the amount of revenue that was generated from our RX, which is about $33 million a year. So I would, I would hate to be put into a position to defend what I'm about to show you all, because it is absolutely as bad as it looks, and there are alternatives out there. And I believe that we should be putting our best foot forward, because remember, this is not just about me, what I've done every meeting, trying to defend the taxpayers' money. Now, what I'm doing, I would, might consider even more important, is that we must remember we are Bonnie Wise's boss, and we are in charge of protecting not only the property taxes, but also our employees that work for the county administrator. And right now, we are going to vote on something that, in my opinion, and while I do agree that Cigna put their best foot forward and is going to put a better option than maybe we currently had last year, because evidently, according to them, my ask. I will go ahead and start with my first item. This is just one item. This could have been accomplished through any county employee receiving a script and going to any free website. This printout on the bottom is what I, I came in early this morning to make sure that all of my drug pricing was up to date, because drugs are a commodity-based product, so the price of the drug could potentially change daily. None of the ones, when I analyzed these months ago, had changed. What you'll see on the right side, the member cost, is what you would say, okay, this is just my script cost when I go, it's $15 for my script. And you might say, well, okay, it was $15. You could have gone to cost-plus drugs, and it would have only been $1105. Well, you only saved $3.95. But that is not the reality, and I think that this is very important for the employees themselves to see, much less the administrator, as we move forward. The reality is, is that you can see that this is both the same drugs. The top is, the top is the spreadsheet that was provided to me. I've hidden all of their proprietary ingredient costs, et cetera. There were tons of fields, a lot of it, I agree, which field costs I'm going to deal with, only what was charged to our employee and what came out of our self-fund, which is all of the employees' money that they are charged for monthly, we pay into, and then it works off of averages from there. So while they might have only seen $15 on the front end, they were charged on the back end of the total plan, each of those, $4,373.44 out of the actual plan, $5,007.33, $5,007.33. The plan itself was charged $14,388.10. If that employee would have simply went to one of these free online websites, they would have only paid $33.15, period. And the self-fund of, what is it, like $100 million? How much is our self-fund?
About $100 million?
The self-fund would have not been charged anything. So while it looks very attractive on the $15 to the member cost, the fund themselves that they paid for was charged $14,000. And you will be able to see terephlinamide, terephlinamide from this one vendor, which was cost-plus drugs. This is not an advertisement for them. I don't even like Mark Cuban. 30 days of therapy. This is a 30-day quantity, 30-day quantity. And this is a 14-milligram tablet compared to the 14-milligram tablet. It's the exact same drug. I'll move on to my second example, and again, I'm only going to do three of these. This one's a little bit more complicated, because there is far more scripts that are prescribed, because it's a much more common drug. So I just consolidated the top three. This is going to be Tadalafil, which is a generic drug for Cialis. Two different versions of 5-milligram, 30-day quantities and 90-day quantities. And then the final one is a 20-milligram tablet. Much more odd, this one does not seem to be subscribed. It was subscribed eight quantities, 23 quantities, but even still, eight quantities, 23 quantities, which our employees paid for. They, so these are all of the sums instead of the individual $15 that they, on average, they did pay. Even if they were paying for the full 30 days of the 20-milligram tablet, in total, the employees would have only paid $2,100 for that filled, but the actual self-fund account was charged $6,500. Again, we did not, we would have not had to negotiate anything with this vendor. I will go to, so that's just the three on the bottom, the three printouts, so you could see that I'm not making numbers up. 5-milligrams, 90-count, 979 for a 90-count, 20-milligram tablet. So we can go to the next slide. The final one, which I really just demonstrated, because I think it's the most egregious. And this, again, has nothing to do with our vendor. It's just the nature of the pharmaceutical industry, and I think that we need to put our best foot forward to, and from what I can see, and if, if anybody challenged me on this, and it would even, should even more motivate the county administrator to prove my point in a year's time with alternative vendors, is all 30-day, all 30-day quantities, you can see that I gave you a 30-day quantity on my bottom screenshot from just this morning from their website. 400-milligram tablets, you can see I selected 400-milligram tablets. The employee would have charged, been charged $34.50 rather than their $15 upfront from their prescription coverage. However, again, the plan to the actual employees' still money, it's still the employees' money in the actual plan on the back end, so it looks very attractive. But remember, they're charged monthly, and they all fund this big self-fund account for $100 million a year. In total, the employees would have paid $448.50. In reality, the way that these formulas are done is that they paid $64,332.46. My numbers are not up for debate. They're not even going to be refuted today. And unfortunate reality is that even I am going to vote yes on this item, just because the employees need healthcare coverage, and we don't have enough time to review the alternatives. There is no magic mystery of special formula that anybody could say that justifies this type of behavior. What this is, is a way that the industries work to kind of flatten out their revenue across many different transactions, so that you really don't see what's going on. This is how PBMs work. It's why the governor is against them. It's why the CEO of this company said that he was going to fight aggressively to the mat to defend his PBM. It's because there are huge profit margins at risk if there is truly an overhaul to the way that prescription drugs are handed to the public. Now, you might not normally see this if you were just a single member paying to a single plan, because it's, it's just you. We are a very large vendor, so it's, you're able to consolidate down and see those costs. I just encourage that, again, whoever says this approval accepts a friendly amendment to direct the county administrator to analyze the different options, MBMs, for example, that exist in this marketplace, to make sure that, in my opinion, there is the reality that county employees could save tens of millions of dollars a year, at least $10 million is what I guess on the low end right now, which I think is a fair number, because out of our RX annual, we do get, I think, $7.2 million in rebates, because there's a rebate structure. But I would argue that there is at least $10 million in reality that would be saved to the county employees' pocketbooks annually if we were to seek alternative RX providers through existing MBM models. A PBM is a pharmacy benefits manager. The governor has been pretty aggressive on trying to weed them out, and I think that the federal government is probably, and if you couldn't hear, Commissioner Bowles asked me to say what a PBM was. So I will digress. Again, I think that, I think that Cigna is, is not the culprit here. I think that it's federal lobbying around the healthcare industry that has really pigeonholed these industries into having to operate in this manner. It's something that Americans deserve to know. I think they, they do know that it's coming, which is why they voted historically for the people that are going in to be in charge of healthcare in the federal government. I think that of the vendors and options that my colleagues, that you're left with, I think that this was the best option that's on the table. I just think that there is at least high seven figures, low 10 figures of annual savings to directly, forget about the taxpayers for a minute, directly to our employees' pocketbooks. And that should be a huge priority for all of us. So thank you very much for your time and hearing me out on these items. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In speaking with staff during my briefing the other day, I was informed that we had a benefit consultant. The project started in 2024. They had seven members that reviewed the RFP for this, this project. And I know sometime, Commissioner Wueston, I appreciate your comments, and we have to stay in our lane, but we have a professional benefit consultant who participated and seeked information. I'm going to move for approval as presented to us on this item, because our staff have looked at this for the best interest of our employees. And when I was an employee back in the day, Cigna was there also. And so with that being said, this is the best thing for our county to do. We know that in industry, everyone has a proposal that they want to push and say that it's not good, it's not working. But I'm going to support this, because I believe and know that our HR director and Becky, Becky was in here. Becky, are you still in here? Stand up, Becky. Because when I retired back in the day, Becky handled all of my benefits and everything, and I put my trust in my county staff to make sure that the information that is being presented to us today is accurate and the best for our employees. That is my motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Cohen, you're next. Thank you.
So, but I do want to, I just want to circle back to your chart for a minute to make sure I understand. It, this is obviously very complex and not something that probably can be unpacked completely in this meeting, but the But the way I understand the charts that you just presented, you're saying that, that when, when I go to the pharmacy and pay a $15 copay for a drug, that on the back end, the county is paying $4,500 for that prescription?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Each, each time a person fills a prescription?
On these few examples, and there are many more.
Okay. So I guess my question then would be to perhaps one of our benefit consultants to maybe put a little context about around, helping us understand this. Because that, that's a, that's a, I don't even know how to react to that. That's such a large number on its face. I'd like to understand how this, how this all actually works, if it's possible.
Good morning, Commissioner. Jean Kelly with the Baldwin Group, consultant. So, high level, you're absolutely right that we, that we don't have enough time to unpack the complexities of the pharmacy market as a whole today. Specific to that drug, we, we haven't seen that information that was presented this morning. So I don't have enough time to analyze that for you. But what I can tell you is there is a cost for a drug that is negotiated with Cigna or any carrier or any PBM or pharmacy benefit manager providing a service to the county or to the employees. That is negotiated. And then there is a cost share for both the plan, the employer, as well as the employee. For the specifics of the cost of the drugs, I do want to turn it over to Cigna because that is a benefit-specific question. So they can answer that in a little more detail.
Good morning, still? Yes, good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is John Hatal. I'm the director with Cigna Healthcare. Great overview, I really appreciate that. I thought it was very effective. I think what's important here, and what I would want the county to take away this morning, is that up until the first of the year, the county was on what we call a margin revenue model for reimbursement. So like any other business, we buy at one price, sell at another price. And that has been the way the industry has functioned for decades. I've been doing it for 25 years. As of 1/1/25, we've moved to a transparent or a pass-through model within the industry. So there is no more margin revenue in those drugs. It's based off administrative fees and dispensing fees. So while I'm not prepared in this moment to speak to those examples, and it is kind of complicated, I would, I would, I guess I would want you to come away with the fact that we have moved the models now that, and that's a function of SB 1550 from the, from the governor, as well as the industry migrating away from these margin revenue models because they don't like this black box. So essentially, what we've done is we've provided the county with an alternative model, which is kind of the prevailing model in the industry. And that's based on administrative fees and dispensing fees go forward. So I guess what I would say is you're going to see probably very little, if any, of those types of situations on a go-forward basis.
Commissioner Cohen, any other questions?
I can't say I understand it much better. But I'll, I'll sit back and hear what the others have to say. I do want to say, though, that it sounds like regardless of how we investigate this going forward, we need to go ahead and pass, and I think you said this, Commissioner Woesthall, we need to go ahead and pass this plan for today. And we can, we can certainly delve into this further in the future. It, just from what I'm hearing, it sounds like a pretty complex situation. And perhaps that's part of the problem, so.
Commissioner Woesthall.
I just wanted to briefly cover the comments that were said, and my name was directly said. My job and my lane is to protect the county, the taxpayers, and its employees. That's exactly what I'm doing. I'm not going to blindly trust some pharmacy benefits manager or, or in-house benefits manager when they themselves are not getting this data and analyzing it for the best interests of the county. My lane is to protect all of the employees of Hillsborough County and all of the 1.57 million taxpayers that I govern over. So thank you very much. And I do hope that you see this very clear information that is not even refuted to you today because there really is no good position to refute the information, which is why it's not being done. I just think that now that we have it and it's out in the sunshine, we need to take a good look going forward on the other alternative models that do exist on RX. Again, I'm not, I'm not in the realm of possibilities to look at the medical side of it. That's clearly outside of my scope. So thank you.
Commissioner Bowles.
Thank you. First, years ago, I used to work in the pharmacy industry. Weirdly enough, I used to do home health care, that kind of thing. And one of the things that I used to do was I used to sit in a room with 20 other people. We used to search through generic products and find the lowest one we could possibly find that we could then build back to Medicaid and get the most profit that we could from that. So I understand how, you know, the pharmacy industry works and having done that for such a long time. And then I'm all for capitalist society and all that, and I understand. But first, is the PBM that we were previously under, was that owned by Cigna as well? So it was kind of an in-house product, you know, it was your, which is perfectly fine. I was just curious. So it wasn't like you were contracting with a third party that then, but then it's kind of an industry standard, you know, like I would, let's use Aetna. Do they have a similar standard or sort, okay. And everybody from the consultant group is nodding their heads yes, and Cigna as well. And along with that, so I would like to support and make the amendment that Commissioner Woesth brought forward. I don't think it's a bad idea to continue to explore and make sure that we're using our money appropriately. It doesn't mean that no one didn't do their job there. And I, and I understand what Commissioner Myers is saying. I don't think that sometimes everybody's eyeballs are looking, one set of eyes, two set, the more eyes are something on it, the better off we are. I don't think anyone's dropped the ball. I just think that, you know, if it's the quote "industry standard", we don't have to necessarily jump in line with that. And if we're willing to pay that extra fee that goes to the admin and the cost fees, let's look at it a year from now. If it's working for us, great. If it's not, we don't see the savings, then maybe we make an adjustment, so.
Well, what I would suggest, why don't we vote on the motion on the floor and then take that up as a subsequent motion, if that's okay? Because I'm, I'm, I'm open to supporting the idea. So I would just suggest we do it in a separate motion. I think it'd be cleaner. If everyone else is okay with that. Okay, got a motion and a second for, to approve B2. So please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda voted no.
Might have someone wants to make a motion.
Again, I'll make that motion that we.
Second. So can you be more clear on the motion?
My understanding, direct the county, county administrator on one year time to come back with RX, you know, options and, options and alternatives.
And an analysis on what, basically what we've gone through the year. I would imagine whatever savings and, will Artemis be tracking that? Okay, so we'll be able to use Artemis to do what we need to do with that? And that will be, we can do that even quarterly even, probably, right?
Absolutely. We do have a diagram.
That's where we can review the pharmacy spend, as well as we are prepared to bring in a pharmacy consultant as well that specializes in that in conjunction with our current consultant to be able to look at those things.
Okay, yeah, well, yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Myers.
By coming back, would this change any of the costs of what we are proposing now on the contract?
No, it's not anticipated to change any of the costs at this time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen.
I just want to suggest that perhaps if we ask for this a year from now, we're going to get it on the eve of having to make another vote like this, I think.
It's a three-year.
It's a three-year.
Okay, okay. So my, my only thought was that perhaps we could discuss it a little sooner than that, that it didn't need to wait that long. But why don't we say up to a year? And if, if there's analysis that can be completed in six months, we could have a discussion about it then.
Which was kind of what I was alluding to with Artemis on a quarterly basis or something like. We can kind of keep our balls on it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
I just wanted clarification. Yes, we're charged with saving money, but I want to make sure there's no reduction in services or prescriptions available to our staff while we're looking into this.
Okay, we got a motion. Commissioner Bowles, second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Please accord your vote.
Do you need me to answer that? There is no reduction in services or changes to the drugs covered by the plan. Thank you for clarification.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Yeah, thank you. Bonnie?
Thank you all. Our next item is item G1. This is to receive a report regarding the widening of Van Dyke Road. And Josh Biladi will take us through this presentation.
Good morning, Josh.
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Josh Biladi, Engineering and Operations Department. This project, Van Dyke Road, has been underway in the planning stages for some time. And as requested by the board, we wanted to provide you today with an update on the current status, progress on the activities currently underway, and next steps moving forward. First, to define the project, Van Dyke Road is located in the northwest part of Hillsborough County. It's oriented east to west, stretching from Lutes to Keystone. The overall limits of this project are from Gunn Highway on the west, near Keystone, to Worley Road just east of Van Dyke Estates. And the important thing to note about these project limits is that the road widening from two to four lanes is not planned for the entire project limits. The widening, as shown here, is planned for the approximately two-mile portion of the road east of the Suncoast Parkway. The portion west of the Suncoast Parkway to Gunn Highway includes an extension of a multi-use trail without additional roadway improvements. And this is being done in order to provide trail connectivity from the Upper Tampa Bay Trail to the North Lake Park Trail. The exhibits on this slide give you a visual of what the improvements will look like on each of those segments. To the left is the trail-only portion that extends west of the Suncoast Parkway and includes a 10-foot-wide multi-use path. And on the right, you see the four-lane divided roadway improvements along with the multi-use paths on both sides of the road. The project does include a proposed speed limit reduction to 40 miles per hour for the limits of the project. And in addition, two roundabouts are proposed to improve intersection safety and operations. So the primary concerns that have been reported by residents in the communities along this corridor are traffic congestion and safety. And the two most frequently reported concerns are with the intersections of Van Dyke with Lake Shore Road and Van Dyke with Lake Reflections Boulevard. And these two locations are proposed to utilize roundabouts in lieu of traditional signalized intersections in order to accommodate the proposed roadway improvements and enhance safety while also providing congestion relief. The image on the left shows the traditional multi-lane roundabout proposed at Lake Shore Road. And on the right-hand side, we have a modified roundabout, referred to as a peanut roundabout, proposed for the intersection of Lake Reflections Boulevard and the Grace Family Church entrance. Public outreach has already been underway for some time on this project, going back several years. And all of this information regarding the project's scope and proposed improvements have been presented and shared with residents. Since the county is now in the process of updating the PDNE study in order to meet federal funding requirements, there is one additional public hearing required. And that is tentatively scheduled to take place on May 1st at the Keystone Recreation Center. The total estimated project cost currently stands at approximately $93 million. What has been funded thus far are the PDNE study at about $2.7 million and the design services at about another $5.5 million. And the remaining project costs, estimated at roughly $85 million, have remained unfunded. However, with the passage of the CIT, revenues collected may be utilized to fund the remaining costs on this project. Note that at this stage, those are planning-level estimates, and the actual costs may vary based on land acquisition negotiations and also on economic conditions at the time construction is bid and awarded. Based on the current activities underway, both the PDNE update and the preliminary design are targeted for completion by mid-2025. At that point, the project will be ready to move into the land acquisition phase as soon as the funding for that phase is made available and allocated. This project will involve a significant amount of land acquisition, both residential and commercial. And the process and timeframe for the county to obtain the right-of-way necessary to complete a widening project such as this can be extensive. It'll vary largely depending on the negotiations with property owners and on the eminent domain process and legal proceedings. Our best guess for this, based on prior experience, is up to three to five years. And at that point, once the land acquisition and final design are completed, the county will be ready to move forward with procuring a construction contract. Of course, these timelines are, at this stage, a very rough projection as there is still a lot of variability expected with the project at this scale. And with that, I will stop and offer to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Josh. I appreciate the presentation. Staff did an excellent job summarizing the project's history and our backup. Board members, I've been intimately involved with this project from the beginning. So I just want to make a couple of comments from my perspective. Unfortunately, Van Dyke Road widening is like all Hillsborough County projects in that they seem to take well over 10 years to materialize. I think that process definitely needs to be improved, but that's a topic for another discussion. In fact, this project has already been in the works for 10 years. Like Citrus Park Extension that I championed for 15 years, and we finally opened that road in 2022. I'm meekly proud of championing this widening project. I mentioned Citrus Park Extension because they're both in the Northwest. Both are badly needed to address congestion relief and safety. And, and both will take well over a decade. Just a little bit of history real quick. In October of 2016, the BOCC approved a 10-year transportation program, including projects that were identified through extensive public outreach and based on interest to various segments of the community. Study identified Van Dyke Road as one of the projects that will provide congestion relief by widening the two-lane undivided roadway, as Josh said, from, to four lanes, from Worley Road to Suncoast. In 2018, the board unanimously approved my motion to fully fund the PDNE study at $2.772 million. That was completed in 2020. In 2019, there was a public engagement meeting at Gaither High School where 103 attendees voiced consistent concerns about safety and delays in the project. That's back in 2019. In 2021, the BOC unanimously approved an additional $5.4 million to fund the design phase. And that time, we also began the process of updating the PDNE to meet the federal requirements necessary for the county to seek financial funding. So to date, over $8.8 million has already been approved and spent on this project. The design phase will conclude in the next couple of months. The next phase is land acquisition and typically begins after the design phase is complete, but it can begin earlier. In fact, we've already purchased, I know, a parcel or two, I think around the roundabout years ago because it's clear some parcels will definitely need to be acquired. As Josh said, with the passage of the CIT, not only do I not want to wait on improving the funding, but I want to begin the next phase ASAP. Again, that's, next phase is estimated to be $31.8 million. And last but not least, as evidence, if anybody questions the need, over the last six years, there have been 235 crashes along this segment. So I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice chair and just make a motion for staff to bring back a recommended funding source or sources for the board to consider for the land acquisition phase at $31.8 million. So that's the motion.
Second.
Second.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Woesth?
Thanks. Mr. Biladi, can you tell me how many total users this project is going to benefit? Road traffic across this stretch? When you analyze these improvements?
We have, and there's been traffic studies that have been done as part of the PDNE. I apologize, I don't have that information in front of me today on those totals, but we can certainly follow up and provide you all of the information that's been collected. It's part of the PDNE.
I'll probably want to see that total number for this item, and then I'm probably going to ask you for it for the next item as well. I think that that's important variables as we consider. I, I do think that, I think that this item is going to receive a lot of pushback. I'm very curious what happens when you start doing the public hearings. As we all know, in this room, we, there are very different niche groups in Hillsborough County. We have a very diverse constituency. And those in Lithia Pinecrest, you know, they fought Lithia Pinecrest two decades ago. And it's much, much to their dismay that they fought that. And now those people are almost certainly excited for it, for the most part. fought that. And now those people are almost certainly excited for it, for the most part. I feel like this time around, we're going to receive much pushback for the Northwest option. You're going to receive, you're going to see, receive different reactions from the constituencies in these two very different areas. And I'm very interested to hear when those public hearings. Have you already had a public hearing on the far northwest extension of Van Dyke? Has that, I didn't see that in the slide. Did you already have that very first public hearing?
Yes. So there is a slide here that talks through previous public outreach that has taken place. There's been meetings back in 2019, including a public meeting as part of the PDNE process initially that was completed in 2020. So with the update to the PDNE, there is one more opportunity, a required public hearing that we're planning to have in May, and we will certainly be able to provide a report back on, on the results of that if the Board wishes.
Do you know any of the feedback that was received in those 2009 public hearings?
From, from what I understand from, from project staff, it was more on the positive side towards proceeding with, with continuation of the project because of the concerns that we do continue to receive regarding traffic congestion and also safety.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Go ahead and record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Right. Next item. Thanks, Josh. Next item.
Don't go far. And the next item is item G2. This is to receive a report regarding the widening of Lithia Pinecrest Road.
All right. Thank you. Good morning again. Josh Biladi, Engineering and Operations. Again, as requested by the Board, this is a brief update on the Lithia Pinecrest widening project, including current status, activities underway, and next steps moving forward. So Lithia Pinecrest is located in the eastern part of the county, oriented northwest to southeast, and stretches from Brandon to the Polk County line. It's an integral part of the regional transportation network, serving not only as a commuter roadway, but also as a connection for travelers to our region. The limits of this project are from Lumston Road on the north to Fishhawk Boulevard on the south, just south of the Alefiah River, which is a total length of approximately seven miles. So currently, this project is in the PDNE study phase, the overall scope of which is to evaluate the needs of the roadway segments and intersections along the entire project limits. The goal for the project is to provide an overall enhanced corridor, employing a complete streets approach to provide safe mobility for all roadway travelers, resulting in congestion relief along with improved safety. Public outreach is, of course, key in the PDNE process to collect feedback and build community support. So public workshops have taken place with project information presented to the public in 2023 and specific alternatives proposals shared with the public in 2024. The county will be holding a recommended alternatives public workshop by this fall, which will include presenting the recommended corridor and intersection alternatives to the public with a plan to prioritize the improvements and implement phasing based on need. The total estimated project cost for this project is currently at $216 million. As of right now, only the PDNE is funded, which is currently underway. The remaining $213 million have yet to be funded. However, again, with passage of the CIT, those revenues may be used to fund the remainder of this project. Note again that at this stage, these are planning-level estimates, and the actual costs will vary based on the design fees, land acquisition negotiation, and construction bids. Due to the substantial length of this particular roadway project, which spans over seven miles, and considering the significant costs and operating impacts of the construction activities, including maintenance of traffic, project segmentation is being considered with the approach of implementing the segments and phases. This will help to mitigate the impacts to traffic in this area during what will be substantial disruptions throughout a lengthy construction period. Our current timelines for the activities underway are targeting late 2025 to complete the PDNE study, at which point it'll be brought back to the Board to present it for consideration. Should the PDNE be approved, a timeline for the preliminary design work will follow and will begin once funding is allocated and a design consultant is procured. Land acquisition can generally begin once we reach 60% design. Like Van Dyke, this project will also involve a significant amount of land acquisition, both residential and commercial, and the timeline is highly dependent on those property negotiations and the imminent domain process. Similarly, it's very early to try to predict a construction timeframe at this stage, but the best that we are able to determine at this point is approximately two to years per phase or project segment. However, there are some next steps that we will be taking in the near term in order to keep this project moving forward. The first of which will be completing that final public workshop and concluding the PDNE study. Additionally, we are planning to move forward with the initial phase of the project, which is the intersection improvements at Bloomingdale Avenue and Pearson Road. We'll be initiating the design process with funds currently available in the FY25 CIP. And we will also begin the procurement process for a design firm for the next phases or segments, and we'll plan to budget for that in the FY27 budget cycle. And that concludes my update, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Josh, I just have one question. Your last bullet said budget for design in the fiscal year '27 budget cycle. Is that because realistically you don't think design can begin until then? Or when do you think design could possibly begin? Not talking about the intersection design.
Yeah, I, I think that's a realistic timeline based on completion of the PDNE and also when we would expect funding to be available to begin that process. We'll also need to go through that CCNA procurement to procure a design firm, so.
Okay. Commissioner Winstall?
Commissioner Miller, I know it's your, okay. I understand that you're still going through the PDNE of this, and I don't have your slides available. I only have the, the printout of, like, the word document with bullet points, so I don't remember which slide it was on. But when is it estimated on this project that the PDNE is completed?
By the end of this calendar year, 2025.
By the, by the end of this calendar year. And how much is it going to cost for the actual design, the CNA for the, the design to, how much is that item?
The current design, we even, we've combined the design and land estimate to be about $48 million, and so we can further break that down for you if you'd like to see just what the design only might be.
Yeah, I mean, the, the biggest variables that I want are going to be what I asked for, for the Van Dyke project and for this project, which is how much of a constituency is this projected to serve. I understand that it's seven miles, but the, the realistic, while you might get sticker shock, the realistic, the reality that we live in is that most growth, almost all of it, is going to be in East Hillsborough. So whatever number you come back and say Lithia Pinecrest is using now is going to be exponentially, in reality, increased. So I don't want to get too lost on what that, that number is right now, because whatever it is isn't nearly as valuable to the amount of people that it's going to serve. What I want to understand is, is there any way, and the land acquisition angle is, is what I was, I'm going to wait to hear what Commissioner Miller says, but what I think should be gone after, because I found out last year, I think it was, Josh, maybe, Lithia Pinecrest and 39, which this goes down to, right, this expansion?
This project does not extend all the way to 39.
To 39, it ends before?
It stops at Fishhawk Boulevard.
And, and you've already actually began land acquisition for this project, though. Isn't that correct? Because I was surprised when I saw a report that came out a couple of weeks ago where staff communicated to a local journalist in East Hillsborough about what a plot of land was, and their response that they reported on was that that, that plot of land, offset of 39, maybe you're buying it for a lay-down yard, stormwater management, I don't know, was that you were buying land already, the land acquisition for this project. Can we confirm that? I asked it at the last meeting, but have we been able to confirm that yet? If we're already in the land acquisition phase of this project?
Yeah, I can confirm that. We were, we did purchase a piece of property for a future pond site for this project, and I think it was about $1.4, $1.5 million was the acquisition amount that we had funds available for in the CIP in order to do that.
Okay, so we are already actively purchasing land for the development of this project?
That one property, yes. And it was a property that we knew was going to be needed regardless of the completion of the PDNE and would also serve a stormwater function even were the project not to move forward.
Okay. Commissioner Miller, my, the reason for separating this is be, is because the project at 39 and Lithia Pinecrest, I was very surprised to hear, has actually been fully funded for over a year now, I believe it is, for turn lane and intersection improvements, but we're just tied up by the right-of-way process that's in place. I think it was you that helped me identify that project.
Yes, that, that project is following a different trajectory, not connected to this project, because it is, it is farther east.
Oh, I understand, but it's fully funded and just sitting around until you can get the right-of-way. And the conversation we had is that the reality that might occur is that it's fully funded now, but by the time you actually get the land, the cost of the actual project is going to have escalated, and you might need budget adjustments.
Okay.
And my, my point that I would suggest to you today, which Commissioner Hagan had the same idea for Van Dyke, which I agreed with, is that we need to find a way for you to start, this project has to happen, and we need to find a way to start funding the land acquisition, that even if they're going through the, the design, Josh, you should be able to at least already tell, hey, we project, we know we're going to widen roads here, and we're going to need this right-of-way access. You should be able to reasonably project what type of land you need to acquire, correct?
That, that is correct, absolutely. Like Commissioner Hagan mentioned, we can begin the land acquisition process before the design is completed.
His is a little ahead of this one, right? His has gone through PDNE and stuff, but we don't need to wait for that. And I believe, Commissioner Miller, that that's what your motion, if you have one today, should include, is that we additionally direct the county administrator to identify funding sources to begin the land acquisition phase now, because we already, we just heard from our director that they are able to identify reasonably what land needs to be acquired. So that way, it's not all more expensive and that way that there's less delays in getting concrete on the road. So, thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Chair. So, a couple of questions. Mr. Biladi, could the design build be done at the same time? So like the, could the project be done at the same time as the design build? I know it's sort of out of my area of expertise. So that they could both be happen, happen at the same time. Like, I guess I'm looking for ways to move this forward more quickly. The need is so great, and you talk about being out in the community. I don't need to go to any of the meetings, because everywhere I go, they tell us how important moving Lithia Pinecrest Road up in priority is.
Yeah, understand. We, we will be looking to do everything concurrently that we can. We don't typically follow a design-build process for these because of the significant amounts of land acquisition involved. So we do start the land acquisition process while we are still completing the design. So once preliminary design is to a stage where we can begin land acquisition, we will begin doing that even as the design is still being finalized. And so we do that to be able to finish those things concurrently so that we'll be ready to move into the construction procurement phase.
Is there a possibility to do it in sections, so that a section could be started more quickly than the, you know, waiting on the, the design for the entire project?
Yes, that, that is a great suggestion. And I have a slide on that. It might be a little bit small to view here on the screen, but we'll provide this, this graphic, and I think it might be in your backup material as well. Because the project is so long, we are planning to break it up into segments. So the different color coding along the corridor there are the segments that we're looking to implement, so that we will be able to move forward with segments at a time, not wait for the entire project.
Okay. So we would, when looking at land acquisition, you could do that in those sections so that, again, the whole project wouldn't be held up waiting to purchase. So in other words, it sounds to me like that has to come first, then the planned project. I would rather see sections of it, so at least the community can see movement.
Yes, absolutely. 100% agree. And in fact, that intersection that I mentioned, because there's a connection of Bloomingdale, a portion of Bloomingdale that'll be improved as well, up to the Bloomingdale and Pearson intersection. So that phase actually is the initial phase that we have funded the design for and are we moving forward as well with the design of that part of it. So, and then followed by the next phases from there to make progress along the corridor and, like you said, show the community progress.
Then my motion will be to direct staff to find the funding sources for land acquisition in the first segment of Lithia Pinecrest.
Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you. I'm going to support your motion. I would, I would suggest maybe a friendly amendment to direct county staff to identify funding sources for all required land for the Lithia Pinecrest project with an emphasis on the first phase of land first, when possible, because you will find, you know, certain landowners, some of them will lawyer up, some of them won't. So it might be, if you are able to identify the funding, you can prioritize the funding bucket to the first phase, which I think is really, is a really smart idea. But what you might have if they go through all of the land is that they find a willing, a more willing participant in the selling process, that it would behoove us to go ahead and buy that piece of land at the lower price, because they don't feel the need to attorney up. And, and also, because once you start one segment, then you are going to get that attorney that is in charge of leveraging, we'll just say leveraging the maximum value of the land, he's going to go through all of the landowners, soliciting, soliciting them to hire him. So what you'll want to do, in my opinion, is to direct them to identify funding for all of the land with an emphasis on the first phase when possible.
I'm agreeable to the amendment.
And I will second.
And I would just, I'm going to, I'm going to support it, but obviously, I would just toss in there to the extent that you can identify the land that we know is going to be used. That's my understanding on these projects. Some of them we know, so we can go ahead and plan that, but the, the part of the project that you cannot, then obviously you're going to have to use your best judgment on that. So, okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Miller, second Commissioner Winstall. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
Sorry, one more item. We have a last staff report. This is to receive a report on the CDBGDR, which is the potential grant that we have available, which will help with some of the improvements that we've spoke about earlier. Tom Fessler will take us through this report.
Morning Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. Just wanted to go through and give you kind of an overall understanding of where we are with this particular notification that we received. So on January 21st, the county received notification from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development that we were going to be receiving an allocation of $709 million. It's basically a CDB, CDBG disaster recovery grant. It's for events that occurred in 2023 and in 2024. Those would be Hurricanes Debbie, Milton, and Helene. The funds were not something that the county applied for or requested. We just received a notification. The funds can be used for housing, infrastructure, economic revitalization, and mitigation. Also, in addition to that, there is a portion of the funds, up to 5%, that can be used for administration, and then some additional funds can also be used for planning. The first thing that's required of us to be able to start to access the funds is to put together an action plan. We are given 90 days from the date of notification to put that plan together. That would mean that the plan would need to be, come back to the Board no later than the April 16th Board meeting. However, we have been in communication with HUD, and they have, they have said that an extension can be requested, and based on what their experience, it's something that they would actually expect us to request. Once the action plan is approved, the county will have up to six years to be able to spend the funds. Also, none of the cities within Hillsborough County have received an allocation of the funds, so the funds- So the funds are coming just to Hillsborough County. So therefore, we do plan to meet with each of the cities. I think a communication came in from the cities yesterday about the funds. So we are in the process, we have been communicating with the cities and we intend to meet with them, find out what their unmet needs are and what they would use the funds for also. A big portion of producing this action plan is for us to go through a process of identifying unmet needs. The action plan will require a 30-day public comment period. So as you can see, we've received notification back on January 21st. You build in a 30-day public comment period. We're already getting to the point where it would be difficult to be able to complete an action plan within 90 days. We did meet with HUD a couple of weeks ago. There is a lot of flexibility that we can have in how the funds are used. However, there are also, because they are CDBG funds, there are a lot of laws, rules, and regulations that surround how the funds are used. So that's something that needs to be considered also. It will be a very intensive process. At least 70% of the funds must be used to, for low and moderate income individuals and/or areas. At least 15% of the funds must be used for mitigation activities. We are aware that when Hurricane Ian occurred, that counties of Lee, Orange, and Volusia received these same type of funds. So we've been in communication with them. In fact, we had a meeting yesterday with Orange County. We intend to leverage their knowledge and experience as it relates to the use of the funds so we can help to expedite our process. And then we also are aware and have been in communication with Pinellas and Pasco Counties. We know that they have also received these funds. And we're also going to be trying to work very closely with them and collaborating so we can all be very efficient in the way that we move forward. On January 30th, HUD did come in and they visited with the county. Because of the size of our allocation, kind of our contract manager at the federal level will be from the federal HUD level, not our local regional that we typically deal with. They were here all day. We had a team of individuals from the county that met with them. They answered our questions. They provided information to us on how the funds could be used. And then we actually did take them out into the community and did some site visits with them. We have started to assemble a team of individuals within the county to be kind of primary on this as we move forward. It's going to be very intensive. We had a meeting yesterday, when we met yesterday with Orange County, it was very eye-opening. Also, I guess the last couple of things I wanted to communicate to you before I took any questions were that, you know, is, our next steps right now are to put 100% focus on creating and coming up with the action plan. And so one of the things that we do probably intend to do is request an extension for the plan to be produced. When we were meeting with Orange County, they said that they had 120 days to produce an action plan and they actually requested a four-month extension. It took them eight months to produce an action plan. We don't want to take eight months, but we, it just, I just wanted to give you a sense of how intensive this process is going to be. We also believe that hiring a consultant to assist us with our action plan will help to expedite things. Most counties that have gone through this process have hired a consultant. And for both creation of the action plan and also additional consultants for implementation of the action plan, because again, there are a lot of CDBG rules and regulations that surround this funding, and we want to make sure that we don't have any missteps along the way. With that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, so before we go into board discussion, I have one question. For the purpose of today, do you need any direction regarding the action plan?
I don't really need it, I don't believe I need any, need any direction today. We just wanted to get in front of you to find out what type of feedback the board may have for us so we could use that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
And I appreciate that very much. This is excellent news for our county, for our citizens. And as much as I understand, I think we all do, the need for the extension at the same time, time really is of the essence, because people have communicated to us so much how they want to see us working on solutions and resiliency and different things before the next hurricane season starts. So I wanted to take this opportunity to just tell you a couple of things. First of all, on December 2nd, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council and the University of South Florida hosted a hurricane impacts and recovery session at the Patel College of Global Sustainability. And what they did was they brought together representatives from Citrus, Hernando, Pasco, Pinellas, and Hillsborough Counties to talk about lessons learned and to go over some of the common issues that we all dealt with. And they produced a 17-page document that I have in front of me that was a summary of what they, what they learned. And I thought that this document could be incredibly helpful to you all in your development of the plan, because it really dives deep into things like hazardous materials and debris management, water systems, economic development, supply chain issues, strategies to increase resilience, roadblocks or barriers, all the different things that I think you would have to confront in the building of this plan. So that was the first thing. The second thing is that I thought that the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition's paper that they handed out to us this morning is filled with a lot of very good ideas. I didn't have a chance to necessarily digest all of it, but there's a lot here that I think matches with what the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council said, and also the types of things that we're hearing from our citizens related to the types of things that they expect. And then the third thing is that I would hope that the Black and Veatch report will also be part of your analysis, that you'll take some of this and see what we can actually use these funds for to accomplish some of their recommendations. Is that, I mean, is that basically the way this is going to ultimately work?
I would say absolutely, Commissioner. One of the, as I said, when create the action plan, it seems like the biggest effort is going to go into determining what unmet needs are. That's going to be a really big focus of what, that HUD is going to be taking a look at when we submit the action plan. So having any of that type of information available is certainly going to be very useful.
So I'm going to definitely make sure that my office forwards this to you. And I'm going to forward also along whatever ideas I might have that, to go along with it. And I just want to encourage everybody, rather than taking a lot of time to meet and slow the process down, that we get to gather, gather whatever we've got and make sure that we make it available to you so that you can incorporate it in. Because I'll tell you, when I, when I saw the download of this, the 17 pages that they came up with, what really impressed me the most was how much of it was common to the five-county region. It wasn't like our situations were vastly different. So I think a lot of what you're going to do, there are other, as you, as you mentioned, the other counties that are going through this, there's a lot of our neighbors that are going through, I think, similar exercises. I know, Bonnie, you said Pinellas and St. Petersburg got a similar grant. So I would imagine that their plan at least is going to contemplate the same types of issues.
Commissioner Wolsol.
Thanks. Have they give you any indications that with all of the federal slashing and halting of grants that's going on right now, that this might be in jeopardy? Just because for perspective, for everyone listening and even probably my own colleagues, even though we keep saying we have a budget of $10.7 billion, you and I know that we only, we only tax, only, but out of that $10.7, we actually only property tax them $1.5 billion.
That's correct.
Way less than the $10.7 or whatever we keep saying. So we're going to get 50% of our annual tax revenue, basically, from one federal grant?
That's correct, Commissioner. It was a surprise to us.
That sounds outrageous, and I can't believe that this is going to stick. I mean, we're basically 150%ing our revenue in one year from this grant, based off of that $1.5 billion. Okay, I'm just very curious, I'm just very curious that we should reach out to the HUD and say, hey, are you guys considering, are these on DOJA's radar? Were they, were they encompassed in all of the executive orders? Because this is, this is just a, it seems like a reckless amount of money that was given to us, I think, seven days before the, before President Trump took office, I believe is when they made this action.
It was part of a continuing resolution. I'm not sure actually the timing on that. And Pinellas County received over 800, is receiving over $800 million, and Pasco is receiving over $500 million.
Wow, that's just, it's a lot for, in comparison to our annual property tax burdens on taxpayers. This is, this is a ton of money.
It is, Commissioner, and if it does, if it does stay in place, as I said, it will be a very intensive process. It was very eye-opening yesterday when we met with Orange County. For Hurricane Ian, they received $200 million. They currently now have seven of their own staff working full-time on this for $200 million.
Wow.
Plus, they're employing lots of consultants. There are lots of rules and regulations that surround this. And so it will be a very intensive process if the funding does stick. Very beneficial to the community, but, 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 you know, something that will take a lot of effort on our part.
Yeah, I mean, the federal government's broke, right? So beneficial to the community, I don't know, that's still up in the air, we'll see. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen.
I don't think the federal government is broke, but we could get into that in another, at another time. What I would say is, there might be limited funds available, and that the faster we move, it would seem to me the more likely it is that we'll get in the queue to get whatever we can get. And we know that our citizens need it, our infrastructure needs it. We sustained a lot of damage in this last storm season. And I agree with you, but let's be hopeful. Let's be aggressive and hopeful and try to get as much of this money allocated here as possible and get a plan together and get moving. And if it gets pulled back, that's beyond our control. But until we hear otherwise, I think we should go full steam ahead.
Commissioner Bowles.
Quickly, you mentioned we just received a word from presumably Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace.
Yes.
Are we going to use some type of particular formula? Are we just going to say, what do you guys need, hear what you get, if we get this money, you know? Or are we going to adhere to a particular type of standard? Can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure, I'll take that one. We did receive a letter from the three mayors requesting their current participation. We all have worked together during the storms. I'll send you a copy of the letter so you can have it. And we do work well before, after, and they're saying during and after for any infrastructure improvements. They will be a part of the whole conversation, of course. The cities are a part. We could, we don't have the money, unlike some of the COVID dollars. We've received the money, and then we did share with the cities. And so in this case, I would see doing some kind of formula, some kind of allocation. I think it's important for this board, however, to know what projects are being done in the cities, and that will be part of the action plan as well. But as far as the cities managing their own projects, I think that probably works best for getting things done more quickly. And probably maybe the sales tax formula that already exists might be a good way to do it. That's to be seen, and that will come before the board in the future item.
Ultimately, we're responsible for those dollars, right? So keeping track of what's going on in the different other municipalities is probably going to be pretty important.
And thank you for bringing that up, because the word is to Hillsborough County. We are the ones who are responsible for following the rules. So if we do allocate monies to the cities, we have to ensure that they follow those same rules. Otherwise, we're the ones who are obligated to repay. But that's okay, we know how to do that. We'll have that in any kind of inter-local agreement. There will be ongoing reports and constant contact, so we'll make that happen.
Would that be something our internal auditor could manage and track as well?
There's probably a role.
So Commissioner, actually, as we went, that's a very good question. So as we went through, you know, when we received the COVID funds, we had a big concern with compliance with all the rules. So we reached out to the clerk's office, and as we received the COVID funds and we did projects, they've been auditing us all along, so that if we got off track, we could have some immediate feedback from them. I've reached out to the clerk's office to Heidi Penner, and they will do the same thing for us with these funds. They will be there to audit us all along the way.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Chair. So with CIP funding and now CDBG funding, would it be possible to get like an overall strategic plan of the funding so that we don't have like all of these different fragmented projects? I think it's, our budget's massive, it takes a lot to understand it. And I think being able to see it in one strategic plan with the different funding sources so that we know where the money's being spent on the different projects.
Sure, I think, Commissioner, when we, when we come back, I think with an action plan, we'll have kind of a framework for you. And then, and then probably even after that, we'll have more specific information on projects. One of the things with this particular funding is, my understanding is, you can't use it to supplant dollars in currently existing projects. So it would have to be a whole separate set of projects that are identified for the use of the funds.
I guess I'm just asking to see it sort of in an overall blanket, like strategic plan, so that we can see them side by side. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom, appreciate it. Bonnie.
Just future issue items.
Any future issues from board members? Barring none, we're adjourned.